Mr. Reese, would you please send that roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've got some. Councilmember Crosby.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yeah.
Mayor Canap. Okay.
Sorry.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Mayor Canap, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna.
Someone still has their mic on.
I hit me.
On their computer.
I think it was on me.
I'm going to skip item number three because we are all present. Item number four, Public Works.
Okay, so we're going to start off before I turn it over to our finance director, as we've been doing. I'm going to run through a number of budget priorities, kind of high level. Sort of an outline of what we're proposing in the public works budget. I'm going to turn it over to Anthony Traxler to expand a little bit upon that. So our priorities within public works are divided into three categories. We have infrastructure and pedestrian safety in the capital budget. Improvements to the library in the capital budget, which is all about fulfilling our commitment. And then we have advancing our parks in the parks budget. Those are the three items. Let me start with infrastructure and pedestrian safety in the capital budget. We are moving forward with the Manchester Road overlay and infrastructure improvements. The total cost of that project is about $2.1 million. The city is paying for a little over a million dollars and we're getting the federal government to contribute just under 1.3 million. That's the Manchester Road overlay infrastructure improvement. That's going to happen this year. It's a big improvement to our downtown district, advances pedestrian safety. There'll be pedestrian safety features in the project. The next item is we're proposing an ADA study and recommended enhancements. Have Anthony expand upon this. This is for $70,000. Of course, our traffic study with implementation. We have the study itself and then we're putting some money into implementation at $100,000. This will help both pedestrian and vehicle safety. Again, from an infrastructure standpoint, we're moving forward with a street reconstruction valued at a little over $800,000. We decided per our survey to invest some more in sidewalks. So per our community survey that was done recently, this is an area where we had a gap. So we're going to. We're proposing $81,000 of sidewalk repair and sidewalk construction, $81,000. And then finally, another project that's been of interest to members of council, the community. We have our Greenwood Railroad Crossing project. We have $250,000 budgeted this year, an overall cost of $500,000. And that's a project that is over a couple, couple year period. We're looking at construction beginning about a year from now. And the overall project will be completed in 18 to 24 months. Right now, there's a big emphasis on design. And so that's the Greenwood Railroad Crossing project, which allows us to keep the quiet zone, of course, that designation. Those are all investments in our infrastructure and advanced pedestrian safety. Improvements to our library, if you recall, council recently approved. The roof project, which is happening now, and that project will be done in about a month. We're really moving forward with that. We have an additional $24,000 fulfilling our commitment to the library, which will be comprised of top pointing, some wall repair and window replacement. So we're happy to propose that this evening. And then the last item, advancing our parks in the parks budget. We, of course, are funding our parks master plan. And then we have improvements to seven parks. Deer Creek Park improvements, Ryan Hummer Park improvements, Calab Park improvements, Central Park improvements, the Skate Park improvements, Greenwood Park improvements, and Yale Park swing sets. In particular, I'd like for Anthony to go into a little bit more detail on Deer Creek Park and Central Park because those are the two that are getting the most expensive improvements. Okay. That total for those park investments is $331,000, $331,800. So it's a very large investment in those parks. So again, our three priorities for Public Works are infrastructure, pedestrian safety, improvements to the library, and advancing our parks. And now I'm going to turn it over to Anthony, who's going to go in a little bit more detail on some of these. And then we can open up for questions before we go to our finance director to get in some of the numbers.
Michael did an excellent job summarizing the overall budget priorities. I just, I'll give a couple of me, items within each one that he talked about. Our biggest problem, we know from the last meeting, is our bids are coming in really high. Our local roads came at 40% above last year. A lot of that's material costs, but there's some other issues right now. And the environment forbidding is kind of, it's kind of scary. We have enough money to offset it in our, in our reserves, which is good because some cities are actually having to forego their federal grants if they can't meet their match. Our match probably went up about $600,000 or $700,000 in this Manchester Road project. But again, we're still being nearly $1.3 million. So that obviously makes sense. To rewind, we actually applied for this grant five years ago. That's how long these federal projects take. So we're going to do something kind of unusual. It should have been constructed this summer, but we're going to actually allow our bid process instead of closing at the end of October, mid-November, we're going to actually have allowed to close May 1st. Just in case that'll help us maybe get more bids. But I still anticipate it being constructed this summer, but it's possible you may see like crosswalk improvements because there's going to be brick crosswalks. We're actually going to build a concrete base and lay the bricks on top because it's more sustainable, it doesn't shift. And so we may do those this fall and then the overlay may not be till next year. There's going to be a mid-block crossing, which is kind of exciting. Anyone knows where the, we look at a 7300 block, I'll say in front of Crow's Nest. There's a fire hydrant right there, so that'll be approximately where it is because there's already no, no parking zone there for the fire department. So it made sense naturally to bring it out. We're going to have a bump out on the southeast corner of Sutton and Manchester, where that bus stop was. So that way you'll have shorter distance crossing Manchester at Sutton. It'll also allow, we have our special events that corner gets extremely crowded. There's trees there. There's some smaller outdoor sit dining, that old house and outdoor dining there as well, as well as in front of the Crow's Nest, which is kind of a nice addition to that part of the block. So we're going to continue to update the business district. We'll know more. We'll know a lot more April 49th. That's when our bids are open for that project. So it could be this summer, it could be more of a next fall project, as long as we get it done by September of 2020, we believe, within our federal guidelines. The ADA study. The idea is to go citywide, obviously look at our buildings, but also look at our crosswalks, look on a citywide basis to make sure we identify problems or conflicts with the American Misabilities Act. We're going to have to hire a consultant for that. They're going to do a patient-wide analysis and then they'll be making some, a series of recommendations, which will probably be implemented, we're planning on there for implementation, so we can start soon. I can tell you right now, one thing I think we need here at this building would be a a power assist door off to the back because you've got, you can get up to the, to the elevators, but getting in the building is difficult. And I imagine we'll have plenty of other things that they'll suggest. At least this way we'll have them listed and then we can work like more of a long-term capital project plan of how we can go do it, start crossing these off list. We'll take a worst first approach of that. So I don't know exactly what the implementation is going to be yet until we get the study. But I'm assuming the cost is probably in the cover before the council. Um. Michael mentioned the traffic study. The contract is, should be in the mail. We, we've got that worked out. We negotiated, Michael and I met with the budget graymire. And we sent the contract off to legal, they're fine with it. And so that'll be signed and implemented. Michael's going to send out more detailed information, but I believe it's going to be May 17th to 18th, which is a Wednesday, a Thursday. We're going to have an afternoon and an evening session, the windows. And we're going to start advertising via social media. We're going to put yard signs out somewhere, we did the town hall. I mean, and Michael will keep you updated on that, but that is moving along.
Yeah, I'm sorry to reject. I'll send something in the next 24 hours. In terms of those dates, there's an evening meeting and a day meeting as Anthony says, I'll send that to you. So hopefully you can provide your cloud or share with others too, attending those public meetings.
This Greenwood Crossing is, is, is 100% beholden to you with the Pacific. And so you guys approved a contract a while back for $87,000 and that's basically the design and working with you with Pacific. We're, we're working with them right now. We've gone through, had our, they call it the diagnostic team. We've already got multiple meetings on that. We've got a concept plan that's been approved and now we're ready to start engineering 30% of construction drawings right now. I'm working with a consultant specialized in working with a railroad because actually they just hired a engineer to hire one that's been approved by the railroad because they want it right away. So it's kind of a, it's a unique situation in why it takes two years. I can't explain, but that's, that's the number we've been given. So we're basically telling the railroad, just tell us what you need to keep this grandfather. It'll ultimately be four new gates. We'll have improved pedestrian crossings on that railroad as well. It'll be a nice addition. And then, of course, a year or two down the road after that, we'll have the Greenwood reconstruction and we'll have the GRT trail on the north side of Greenwood too. So that whole area over the next four years is going to look a lot different than it does today. I don't know if you want me to talk about the parks now or when we get into the budget.
Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind, just in those, those two primarily.
Yeah, and Deer Creek. The, the biggest thing is going to be rest, restoration. We started partially on that, but they've just been beat up. They've been through several floods as well. We're just going to basically reconstruct the interior of bathrooms. The North Pavilion, if anyone knows of that, it's closest to the baseball field. That was originally constructed to be twice as big, so it was going to be enclosed. Structure, it's kind of an open air structure and the timbers underneath there are getting hit with the weather. It's not designed for that. And so they're starting to have some weather damage, so we're going to go ahead and, and close that to protect the, the roof structure. We're not going to double the size of it because we feel size is appropriate down there, but that's what the original design was for that. Central Park is probably right now a playground that's probably in bad shape. Central Park is getting. And so we put the entire amount in to replace the playground. But you'll notice in there, I put that we're going to be going out for a grant. We're going to go through savings counties. Parks program, we believe we'll get a grant for it. We hope so. But if not, we've got the full amount in there. We do have money to fund that if we need to go with that because that's, that's one of the worst parks we have right now. A lot of the people are starting to rust and we're having problems with it. And it's actually, even though it's a small park, it's heavily utilized by people in that area. And there was one other thing, the play surface at, at Greenwood Park, we're going to put a replacement at that play surface. Previously via a block grant, council approved some improvements to the actual playground, but those are coming as well, roughly simultaneously. Other than that, most of the park improvements are kind of major type issues. We added a lot of facilities. We did last year's budget, but they're on back order. It was a supply issue. We put them in this year, but they didn't approve those last year. We did. We've just been waiting on, but I don't, I don't expect to see them before next year's budget. So we, we put them in there, planning on having that basically water fountain every major park, excluding trolley park. I think that's it. Yeah.
Any, any, Public Works, the, the main concern for us over the last year and a half was just getting enough staff.
It was a, it was a real challenge. And go on, a while back, we had to pay $24,000 for striking, right? Because I just didn't have a staff to get out of it. We've been basically operating down a few people for about 18 months. I'm happy to announce we, in the last three months, we've brought two people on. So we're, we're, we're still down one. That makes a tremendous difference. Our, our newest employee will be starting in about 10 days. So we're making, making good progress. I mean, we still continue to have an open application. Trouble is, I guess, I'm back for some summer help. We could use that. I don't think he wants to. It's tough work. It really is, especially in the summer because it's so darn hot. But the most recent employee that we, he's actually paid that company. Study work, he's got a lot of skills. We are also doing a lot of work in-house because of the, the big prices. Anyone's been over to the, the firehouse, just, just a room, probably about 300 square feet, just in mud and tape and hang the drywall. They think one of the charges is $10,000. That's probably about a $2,200 job. We already paid for the drywall. It was sitting there, maybe $10,000. So we've been doing a lot of work ourselves. And I actually heard a building inspector, a joke around, he said he was somewhat handy. And then he pulls up one of those white cargo vans with no windows. That's not somewhat handy. You know what I mean? So we, I'm not kidding. So he's been doing a lot of work. We've been trying to do that as much as possible. You'll notice in the capital parks of 2003 account, you'll notice, I think, for $55,000 in there for a pool house enclosure. I think if I bid that out, believe it or not, you notice the house, I imagine that probably coming at about $100,000. Our building official, my building inspector, and our new Public Works employees, they'll be starting today. They're going to build a structure themselves. It's simply to house the equipment. Equipment can stay outside, but it doesn't make sense for how much that equipment had to be out in the elements. But it's designed, in case you're wondering, we okay, it's been out like that for about nine months. Because before the prices were up, I did the $75,000. That's where I did my $100,000 figure, guest fund. So we think we can do that ourselves. So we're trying to do as much ourselves as possible with some of the projects that makes Lexi happy.
So let me see if, before we go to Lexi, to go through some of the numbers and some, some other details. Are there any questions for Anthony or me?
Yeah, just a quick one. So on the traffic study implementation, do you all feel that 100,000 is enough?
Believe it'll, it'll, it'll start with some of the, you know, it'll restart like, for example, I know in your ward, I believe we'll probably do a road diet on Bellevue. I don't know if anyone knows, Councilmember Crosby and I had some discussions when I got the speed counts back. I assume people won't say they're going 50 or 60 miles an hour down the road. Numbers, that's 35, 40. They are going that fast. Up north of, the stretch north of Manchester. So I assume a road diet would be in order. That could get us going on to engineering and some of the implementation. I believe anyone that's Jenny and Sean in your ward at Maple and Arbor and, and, and Marshall, that intersection, people are going up Maple one way. I imagine that would pay to essentially for a bump out there for traffic calming measures to avoid people going up a one-way road. It, it can do, I think it'll actually do some enhancements. I think it's better for everyone to get some of these enhancements out of the way, but to budge these out, similar to what we would do with ADA. We won't have the money to do it all in one year, but you'll see the list. We'll slowly be checking that off the list.
In addition, this being a priority to members of council, it's a big priority of mine too. And Anthony knows that and the consultant knows that. So I'm excited about the implementation phase, of course.
Sorry, not a question, just a quick comment. Under the objectives for Public Works, the number one objective to maintain safe, clean, smooth streets and bridges for motorists. Is it possible to amend that?
A lot of that was in for the distinguished budget. So I wouldn't. Those weren't added to get the distinguished budget awards.
I, I would just like to point out that we should add pedestrians in there as well.
Of course, thank you.
Okay. And so we're going to start with the Public Works budget tonight. The first page here is just the overall summary. You will see. We aren't changing the number of actual staff, staying at 15.75 full time equivalents staff. But we are, we do have an increase to $1.3 million from about a little over $1.2 million. A lot of that increase is going to be in personnel services. We have our pay grades and we have promotions that we try to do within those pay grades on an annual basis. So any newer employees would be eligible for those pay, pay grades or pay steps. We have, and then we just have a slight increase in materials and supplies, but the other services charges, that's the same from the previous year. So as I go into salaries, actually. And because we've gotten in our insurance numbers now, we are seeing a 5% increase in health insurance for next fiscal year, starting in July. They've estimated a 5% for dental. We don't know what that number is, but I've gone ahead and updated the insurance cost on this spreadsheet for you all tonight. So you can see what the new insurance costs are. So that's part of what that increases because of the 5% increase for insurance costs under salaries. As you can see, again, we still have no cost of living or mid-year merit increase. Again, that will be determined when we do the consolidated budget after we get the revenue projections. And I'm working with those in a meeting with the city manager later this week to kind of go over those numbers. So. Okay. So if we go to, so we've already looked at personnel services. So if we go down to the second section here on materials and supplies, you will notice. Okay, under materials and supplies, we have. Yeah, okay. But still, there's at the bottom of the. Okay, anyway, so I apologize. So, um. That's why. That's why. Yeah. So the big difference on this one is going to be the gas, gas oil cost and that's going up to $30,500. We still anticipate the gas prices are going to remain high. It looks like from everything we're seeing, they're expecting gas type prices to stay high through the rest of this calendar year. So because of the nature of what they do and the types of vehicles they drive and the mileage they, miles per gallon they get, we really wanted to make sure we had enough money in the budget for gas for them. And that's really the only thing that has changed here under materials and supplies. And then, as we had said before, other services, we didn't really change too much. We did change electric, gas and water, or electric and gas. There's a slight increase from $6,400 this fiscal year to $7,300 next year. And then for gas, 48, $4,850 to $5,600 this year. We've just been seeing it's like ticking up in those costs and we're going to make sure we had enough money in the budget to cover those. And then another thing I really want to point out is this $10,000, it's nuisance abatement. I know that some years we don't spend anything, some years we spend a lot more. It's for, if we have any trees or any homes or anything that we need to demo, we do budget $10,000. So if it is $20,000, we did have some budget if we're not completely short following ourselves. But again, that would only be used if it was needed. Let's see. The conference and travel, that'll stay the same from previous years. So not looking at any different trips or any different conferences or any different, or any raising cost for any of those. And the training, just the various training seminars, all of that, the horticulture classes, those are all the same from prior years. We really aren't looking at any increase in any of those either.
We also put a generic in there, various training seminars. One we're going to do, depending on one of my Public Works employees who's very good, very mechanic, very fine. He's been doing a lot, we're going to do a more in-house, prepared in some of our vehicles. And with our streets weaver, some of the LG owners, right, he's going to get certified, we do sort of training on that because it's a sole source with, with our streets weaver. If we have any maintenance issues and they send someone down, it's very costly. So we told him, we're going to train him on that. That's a good example of a training seminar that I, that just came up this year that we didn't think about, that we didn't even know was an option. So that's something that puts up a generic. Good example, what we would use for a service like that.
And then if you look at like these budget worksheets, again, they just give you a little bit more detail about the different items, but there really aren't a whole lot of changes in the public works budget. And then the goals and objectives and mission statement, like I said before, those are for the budget, for the budget award. So those should be updated at that. Are there any questions about the Public Works budget? Okay, then if, if everyone's okay, we'll move on to the capital improvement budget. So this is the capital improvement budget. This is a little bit smaller. There's a couple of things. As you can see, there is a significant increase in the capital improvement budget. The capital improvement, sales tax can always be used for capital improvements. So it's kind of limited, but it's for all of our major capital projects that we're going to be doing. So as you can see, there are no personnel services because no one works within capital. So the biggest jump is in our capital improvement special projects and then our capital outlay. Those are our big jumps in expenses, but we'll go through them pretty straightforward.
If we get, we get almost 1.28 back from the federal government on that too.
Okay, so. If you go to the first section, which obviously not personnel services, but materials and supplies, there's a couple of items I wanted to point out that were, had some significant differences. So if you look at account 50402, which is traffic paint, which is this one right here, we budgeted $3,700 this year and we have budgeted $7,000 for it next year. This is because due to being short staffed, we've had to hire someone else to do those projects for us. And I believe earlier this past fiscal year, there was actually a, a contract that was signed for, I believe, $24,000 to actually do the traffic painting. But it feels that $7,000, we might not have to track, not have to contract out all of that work, but just some of it. So because now we're getting more hired. The next line under signage materials, we're actually going to decrease that by about $1,500. And that's because the work that's been done on the signs, they're all in pretty good shape. We don't expect that we'd have as much expense going forward. And then these last two, the concrete materials and asphalt materials, both of those are seeing a significant jump. And that's due to supply chain issues and the current environment forbidding just, those kind of materials are just skyrocketing in costs. So we want to make sure we had enough budget for that. So we want to make sure we had enough budget for that. So. You will notice that. We reduced the professional services six zero four zero zero from sixty one thousand eight hundred twenty four dollars to nothing. That is because part of that cost, I believe, we have fifty thousand dollars of that was the traffic study that we've moved into capital. Because we're going to include the implementation as well. So it's part of a capital outlay as opposed to just a professional service. And so the other eighteen hundred dollars was. The elevator, yeah, the elevator repair, and that's also in capital projects. So that's why that line is now zero. The IT support is going to go down about seven thousand dollars, about sixty five hundred. That is through the information we received from Go Inet, which is our new inner, or IT service. That with their projections as well as reducing cost for the website. Because we had website design and maintenance budgeted the previous year. The website design is completed, we have our new websites announced, just so I'm going to.
A while back, we all looked at the Go Inet contract. Experience, the problems with servers and our security system. They've just done a fantastic job and they've done, they've saved us a lot of money and with our electronic door services. But setting up this camera here and Sean, they've got some dealing with them, they've been really good. So they don't talk too very often, I know we talked about this kind of, it's kind of a radical change. There will be all those problems of this company, I don't think could be happier with them, just to let you know so far with the grid hire.
The next item, I just wanted to mention, and Anthony had already mentioned that we've been doing more vehicle maintenance in-house. Some of like preventative maintenance and some of the other repairs and that there is an employee that we're going to get more training on so they can do more of those repairs. So that should keep that cost where it's at. And then finally, at this bottom section, and I noticed this, that when I updated it, I didn't. No, I didn't update the next page. So if you look at the next page, which is capital outlay, it shows the total as five hundred twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. And here it only shows five hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Before, and I'm not sure exactly why, but we had like public works, capital outlet, executive department, capital outlet, lease capital, each division. I just wanted all this capital outlay because I don't think it really, some of, there's some things that are going to go across all, like computer equipment and memory. And so it's just kind of silly to put some of it in public work, some of it in exec and some of legislative, when it's all in the capital outlay account. So I do apologize, I didn't, I updated the one sheet, but I didn't update this one. So the number should be five hundred twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. And so in capital outlay, I just want to go over a few of these. So computer equipment, obviously that's where, you know, some of this only is computer equipment that comes up as needed. But a lot of that is going to be memory upgrade rates for the equipment we have, because we have good equipment, just need more memory. I did run a note that this is the. Third and final payment on the front loader. So that's twenty six thousand dollars that we'll have available for something else the next fiscal year. Let's see, the fire alarm control panel and upgrades, the fire alarm, it, I believe it runs on like the three G. And so it is being replaced for replacing that and replacing the whole panel because it won't work on the three G anymore. The city hall HVAC unit, we are budgeting twenty five thousand dollars for replacement, replacement HVAC unit. That'll only be used if the one we have dies. It's, it's old, it's going to die soon, so we're going to see if we can make it one more summer. Anthony and Michael Book mentioned the citywide ADA study improvement and implementation, so that covers both. As well as the library commitment that we have to get that taken care of. The hot water heater city hall in part of our renovations, with the police renovation. In moving the police detective area into the old firehouse area, we have to put in a stairwell and putting in the stairwell and the walkway through. We have to move a hot water heater. It's really old, so we're, it's when you move it, it's going to not work again, just because that's the way life works. So we're getting a new hot water heater and moving it, so that's what that cost is. Yes, now it's, it's for both, right? Let's see, sewer camera, we are planning on purchasing a sewer line camera and we can use it so that we can either verify breaks or verify repairs that have been made. So if there are any issues afterwards, we can see that there were actual repairs made. And it would save us, help us with some other projects around town as well. But we think that that would be a lot cheaper than spending the money that we spend for an outside party coming and do it all the time. Also, I want to note that we have budgeted forty five hundred dollars for the wireless mobile job site safety headsets. That's for the, the workers when they're out working and like leaf blowing or leaf pickup or what you're doing, anything like that. And it's really loud, they can talk through their headsets and they can have protective rose cancelling for their ears, but then they can also talk to each other. So they didn't, you know, know what's going on. Oh, this garage office furniture, I know that that looks like a lot for garage office furniture. It's actually remodeling the garage, the office for the maintenance superintendent as well as the break rooms. New furniture, carpet, all of that, so it's not just furniture, it just. Yeah, that's, so I understand, so.
Many excavator will save the staff that we're doing sewer lateral repair work, there'll be a lot less exclamation of restoration. Keep the resident jars looking a little nicer too. A little more, a little more surgical. They'll also allow us to sell a secondary backhoe, which is still functional. Already there, I wanted to give out, so we get a lot more money on the actual sale while it's still operational.
You good? Okay. And then the traffic study improvement and implementation, which was already mentioned, but that's where it's at in the budget. I'm going to make sure you all saw that as well. So those are just like the capital outlays. And then we have like our capital improvement special projects, which are our larger, larger projects. So. The first one I wanted to bring up was the city hall improvements, that hundred twenty three thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars. The majority of that is the energy savings payment. It's also like carpet and city hall and some other improvements that we're doing on our end with regards to the police department. So it's, it's not just city hall improvements, there's also that large payment for the energy savings. I just wanted to note that this one million, two hundred twenty four thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. That that is including the budget amendment that was made earlier this year. So that's why that number might be different than what your but printed budget if you compared the two. And then. The Manchester base for, this is where it's, okay, so we have three hundred forty thousand dollars budgeted for this fiscal year. We are not going to spend three hundred forty thousand dollars this fiscal year. So we'll probably spend around fifty thousand dollars. And that's why we still have two point two million dollars for next fiscal year. So it's not two point five billion dollars, it is more the two point two. We're just going to spend a little bit of it this fiscal year. We had thought that we'd get more of it, more of it done, but. I mean, it's engineering, we need to wait until everybody's tangled off, so. This is also here, the Greenwood Railroad crossing, the five hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted this year. Obviously, we're not spending that about ten thousand this year. And, and then as it said, the two fifty, the remainder of the following year, so. Okay, and I think that was all of the, all of the big or significant changes I could find for the capital improvement budget. Are there any questions about any of those?
Just a quick one, so I'm in light of these increases, which I'm very excited about, I think these are great projects. Can you talk a little bit about the impact to the overall like health or reserve of this fund?
So we have, we are using a lot of money out of our reserve. And we try to maintain our reserves. So one of the things that we try to do, especially within a capital budget or in, especially in capital, is you want to maintain a certain level of reserve. And sometimes you want to have extra money because you want to do a big project. So you're trying to hold on a little bit of money so you can get a little bit of extra reserves, you can do a big project and really dip into it. This project, I mean, this is not like our general fund where we, where we got to watch going into our reserve. This, this money is made to be spent. But we do want to save some of that money. For example, when Anthony had the street project that came in six hundred thousand dollars over. If we didn't have fund balance, we would not be able to do it. This is going to bring our fund balance down, it is going to take a dip in our fund balance. But I think as long as we're just strategic going forward, we should be good. I know we've had a lot of kind of big projects and me and Anthony have talked about it and he thinks that a lot of the projects that we have going forward, we're going to be able to do kind of more, a couple every year. As opposed to trying to do them all at once. Try to be a little bit more strategic than that.
So about how much do we have in that fund right now and how much are we taking from it?
Well, it's, it's.
I know it's an estimate, I know it changes.
I know, it's hard, so I think we have right now about. I want to say we have about one point.
It was pretty high when we talked about the library.
Dip into it about one, three, or we have about two, three right now.
Yeah, so I mean.
Mind we continue to get money.
Right, so we still have about one, three after, or one.
Yeah, I've been saving Manchester for probably three years. And then, and I've been cutting a block or two back on our street bits, because this primarily, you can tell every year, most of it's coming from street reconstruction. So I've been pulling some back in anticipation for this. Years ago, when we only did Manchester, the newly local roads, there were a lot of residents that were upset. And they're throwing money in the commercial district, what about my roads? So we didn't want to ever have that happen again. So I've been saving slowly in anticipation for these projects. And then the railroad was kind of a surprise, so last year I cut more roads out than I would have normally done. Knowing it was going to be.
Yeah.
He called me, you realize you're dipping into your general.
I'm with Councilmember Crowley, they're all great projects that need to be done, I just wanted to, you know.
But I did, I did, I was like, you do know that you're. Are there any other questions about the capital budget? Okay, so this is your rural parks budget. As you can see, there's an increase of about two hundred thousand dollars overall. And if you notice when you go to the. Page two, it's the pool bottoms, those have been paid off. We're going to keep this in the budget for a couple of years until. Until it, like, when you look at the, at the screen here, this is two thousand eighteen nineteen, this is nineteen twenty twenty two, when. Two more years, when this falls off, when the, when they're finally paid off and we don't show any expense at all for all five columns. That's when it will drop out of, out of the budget. Because we, if we have that past budget expense, we need to show that up until for the five year period. And it's part of the financial statements that you have to do for the distinguished budget award. So we'll leave it, leave it in there, but there is no expense in there. So it's, it's kind of silly, but it has to stay. So. If we go to twenty eight oh two. Which is Parks and Recreation. So this is only showing about a twenty thousand dollar increase. We aren't changing the number of staff. And that is, we have a summer maintenance worker and then we have the full-time staff. We split public works staff, a portion of them is public works, a portion is paid out of parks because they do do both. So we split their salary between the two. And again, I do have in here their insurance costs, so it is the insurance cost based on the new rates. So those are going to be the only ones that aren't highlighted at the May tenth meeting. Okay, so. Really, there's not a whole lot on the materials and supplies that, I mean, that really hasn't changed this. I mean, very, very minimal, there's two hundred dollars more on the mosquito control. And, you know, a little bit less nursery supplies, but overall, it pretty much saves. Save the same from the prior year. It's really in the other services and charges where we have really any changes. The first item I wanted to bring your attention to was bus service, which is six hundred zero zero five zero. We budgeted twenty five hundred dollars. We currently have two buses, we have a smaller bus and we have the larger twenty person bus. That bus is old and it, it, it's on its last leg. Anthony has looked into it and he believes that we were budgeting the twenty five hundred dollars should we need to rent a bus in order to take the larger groups out. And he's also kind of looking into seeing if that makes sense going forward, or if we really would need to buy a new twenty person bus. So he's, we may do this for a little bit and then maybe come back later on and say, you know what? Now it's the cost are getting up there, it makes more sense to buy a bus, just kind of depends once we get past. Pandemic and people are doing things again, and it's kind of see what the activity level is like. So that's just there if we need to rent any buses this year. Also here under part, you know, under professional services, we had fifty thousand dollars budgeted for this fiscal year. We have forty seven thousand dollars budgeted for next fiscal year. That is for the park, Parks Master Plan. The actual cost is about fifty thousand dollars, we're only going to expend about three thousand of it in this fiscal year. That's why we're moving it over to forty seven thousand of it for next year. Yes, but.
Under park expenses, the next item. Just food for thought, this has been a long standing agreement in Richmond Heights, you know, with the cost of the pool, which is for us principally personnel services. And they're, they're obviously going up, we're having to pay lifeguards fifty dollars an hour this year. We have twenty five for an update, we know we said last problem, so if you know any, anybody out there that wants to be a lifeguard, please encourage them to apply. But Richmond Heights is looking, they're sharpening their pencils a little bit more than they have in the past. And they've already come to Michael with a couple of discussions that came in with some where they're looking at possibly revisiting some of those expenses. So we are looking at any and all options as far as, you know, the deals we've given out in the parks, if we want to keep it affordable. So I'm not sure if that's going to come up anytime soon, I just didn't want you to be surprised if we come up with some potential changes. Within that agreement, I could see Richmond Heights kind of wanting to revisit and spend right on that four hundred thousand dollar mark for a long time.
Right, that, that's, yes, so I guess. Can you give us an example, because?
Example.
Like I, when you say they're looking to revisit, forgive me, forgive me, Anthony, when you say that they're looking to revisit it, what, what does that mean? Like revisit it as in no, no longer a partnership?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
No, no, I apologize.
And I'm sure I may be the only one thinking that, but I'm, I'm thinking the word, so.
You know, I meant like, hey, we want to charge you a little bit more money for the service of that service. That's, I did not move and buy that, I apologize. And you guys need to, the push is, we're getting, you need to increase speeds up for pool. And we're saying we don't want to increase speed, so then we're looking, because Richmond Heights is, is a partner in this as well. And so we're looking at, right now, Rock Hill and some wards in the city are giving basically resident rates for nothing. So we're basically saying you guys need to pay some sort of a nominal fee to continue to ma- maintain that benefit. So we're saying, how, how about that versus raising our rates, right? So we're trying to keep it affordable, Richmond Heights is saying, we need more revenue. And, and, and both sides are correct here, it's just I'm willing to know that there might be some subtle changes. I don't anticipate any major, but you may be hearing of a couple. I know you were contacted, Michael, talking to you about from Rockville about that. And so this is the type of things we're, we're doing instead of raising rates, we're looking at other options, so. And right now, I am concerned about forty to forty five lifeguards, I think we do have twenty five. Still working on it. We push those kids to the pool. We push those kids to the pool. Yeah.
Um
Is that, is that good? Anything else you want to add up there?
Um um, we are having about a ten thousand dollar decrease in repairs and maintenance and that is due to replacing some of our older vehicles and older equipment. So we're thinking we'll have a lower repair maintenance cost going forward. And then we have a slight increase about two thousand dollars in grass cleaning fees. We could do the fuel cost, we know the the gas to run one more is going to be more expensive. Um, and then we also have budget thirty five thousand dollars for weed tree trimming. That is actually, right now, we have two massive sycamores that the arborist is looking at to see if they're healthy, if they're not if they need to come down or not. And so we have trees like that all over the city that our arborist will look at. And if we have to remove anything, we we need to have the money budgeted so we can remove them. So that's what that's there for. Because weed trimming is not that expensive. It's mostly for the the tree limbs and cutting down. And that's, let's see, that's it on this one. Let's see. Then we go over to the pool. And again, we don't have any actual staff in the pool. The pool is staffed by Richmond Heights and then we pay that park agreement to them. But we do maintain the pool. So one of the items that we have is um, under materials and supplies, we have an increase of about eight thousand dollars under pool chemicals. Just all of those sorts of chemicals are, the price is just increasing. So we want to make sure we have enough to ma- maintain the pool and make it some of the walls some along. And then we do have um on other services and charges, we do have an increase of a slight increase on both water and sewer, just because of the use and utility usage on that. We think that there might be a little bit of a bump there. Um, and then the only other item that I had, that I wanted to draw your attention to, um, again, with the repairs and maintenance that for for those services, we're we are replacing items on a more regular basis, which makes our repairs and maintenance costs go back. So
I see that major renovations to the pool pump, I don't know if we're doing that this year. I think it's not here the last few years.
So then in the pool capital outlay, the first item, the twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars, that is just our annual replacement schedule, rather than trying to replace everything all in one year. We replace them a certain percentage every year, just to keep everything up to date and looking good. Um, we have twenty five thousand dollars budgeted for the valve replacement and upgrades, which is for the pump, which will save us a lot of repair maintenance costs on the pump. And then we also have ten thousand dollars for the filter tanks and sander inflation, which is also for the pump. So that will help to reduce any expenses there. In the office concession improvement, we're going to be replacing the flooring there. And we are just paying the cost to be about seventy five hundred dollars. We're also going to install a camera system at the, at the pool, which we think will be about eighteen thousand dollars. And then finally, there's that equipment house for the splash pad. That was that pump house that Anthony had mentioned earlier, that the guys are going to do themselves and in to save us a lot of money. We had to cut it out of the project originally because it was so much, it was so over budgeted. Um, and that oh, this is just capital improvements. Okay, so under the capital improvement section of the parks department. Um, we're going to, this is the other portion of the one ton, one ton dump truck. So that parks is paying for half of it and public works is paying for the other half. Um, and then we have the right spreader for seed, salt and fertilizer as well as the walk behind, which both of those are mainly going to be for field maintenance. So for all of our fields. There's really not, um, let's see, if we go over to here. The other big thing, this is going to kind of detail all the improvements that are being done at the parks and as Anthony had mentioned, the water bottle fillers have been purchased. They're just on back order. So they're all included in the detail for next year's budget because we won't, we are anticipating getting them prior to fiscal year. Yeah, and Anthony mentioned about the restaurants at Deer Creek that we budgeted for this year, but due to staff, we weren't able to get to it and we'll be doing it this fiscal year, twenty two, twenty three. And that's all of the items that I once wanted to make sure I pointed out. Was there any questions?
We have two questions. Um, the first one is, do we consider the splash pad part of the pool, like a refound or the pool budget? Do we know how much water usage that will use and have we budgeted that in?
It's actually, the reason this splash pad was so expensive is because we actually have a filter system within there. So the only thing we're using through evaporation where other splash pads like Richmond Heights, that's basically the water goes out and down the drain and runs off. That's why our splash pad was so expensive.
Great, that's excellent. All right. And then my second one was, um, in the parks and Ryan Hummer, it says matching funds for dugout. What are, are we matching a grant or are we matching something else?
Well, we know that the M R H Association wants dugouts. And so I put enough in there. There was discussion that was at the park board. But there was, last year was matching because I've managed to, they were going to grant, but we may end up paying for them. I don't know it's going to be the council's ultimate decision, but I put enough in there for for dugouts, should that be the case. I know they were looking at grant opportunities. I I don't know where they are with that, but this should go a long way to getting dugouts if they want. I think dugouts are good. That's optionally set out the sun. I know we want though pretty bad.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a one comment, one question. Whoever's mowing our lawns, keep them. They were far better than what we had a few years ago. Stuff actually looks decent. Yeah. Uh, second, those cameras, were they going to be looked upon?
One in the parking lot, most likely.
Who's going to be looking at them? I'm sorry. Are they going to be at the pool house? Are they going to be here? The police?
They'd be going, the police could have, it basically would be if we needed to review something, we'd have one kind of by the, you know, with the, probably with a bike, little bike wrecked and probably a broad camera. We haven't got the bed yet. Assumption is one in the parking lot. Oh, I apologize. I think you're wondering where they were.
No, I mean, I'm I'm far more concerned about privacy than where they are.
In the lieutenant's police office that people are first.
That's it.
Yeah.
Those, those won't be viewed by employees of the pool.
No, no, that it would be a part of our camera in addition to our camera system. The only employees that can really look at it right now would be either police lieutenant. I apologize. That's and within the uh, the concession or the area as well, where you can get cashing and going to, and then you can see coming and going if it's ever an issue. The ones we have now are just
Any additional questions? Thank you all. And I just want to say I think we have the best public works department in the county. So I just appreciate the work that you all do and I appreciate the work that you have done to provide us with a great solid budget. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned.